Thank you. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is Thursday, June 16th. We apologize for the delay of the length of the executive session. I would ask the people to be ready for the pledge.
My pleasure leaders, to the power of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin with public participation. Anyone care to comment? Much more?
No, the recording, it's being recorded by.
Ah, thank you.
Yep. Sorry.
Right, the meeting is being recorded by WCTV. Thank you.
And?
And, of course. So, no public participation, thank you. Uh, we'll go to good news. Now, we'd just like to start to say that the girls' tennis team will be participating in the state championships on Saturday. One undefeated team going against another, so congratulations to Coach Swet for making it to this, uh, this high point of the season.
We've got seventeen extraordinary students who have done remarkable things. We should all be proud of, uh, of what they represent for Wareham High School.
Thank you. Any other good news? Joyce?
Um, so it's been a whirlwind of a couple of weeks. So graduation was great, right? Awards, the award ceremony. It's always to hear the amount of money that's awarded at that senior awards banquet is just amazing, and I hope that, first of all, just so grateful to the Wareham community. And not every community is as generous, um, as Wareham. Not every community is as fortunate, the students graduating, as fortunate, um, to have so many scholarships awarded. So, just a thank you, um, to the Wareham community. And then there was the school opening on Saturday, which was really great, really exciting. A lot of people came out for that. A lot of planning went into that day. So that, that was really great. Yeah, a lot of kids. It was a beautiful day. It, it was really great. And I guess that's the end of my good news.
Jeff?
I just want to say, Joyce would never say this, but she was the emcee for the event,
By default.
Thank you. Great job, and, uh, I thought, I thought our chair's, uh, speech was right there. Don't need to hear politicians, but I'll take it from you. I'll take it from you any day.
Right. The school doesn't look like a prison, so it's good.
I stole one from Dr. Shaverwood's playbook. All right, we'll move on to obsolete furniture? Or is this obsolete equipment or just furniture? Or both?
Both.
Okay.
Yes, so you have a list of obsolete, um, both technology and furniture that I would ask that you deem obsolete. If there are any working parts, we will remove them and make use of them.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, um, and again, I'm just asking, so anything that is able to be, like, sold off to recoup any expenses to the school will be done? And do we get a list of any of those things? For obs, anything that's been declared obsolete up to this point, have we been able to be provided what we've been able to recoup from any of those?
We are working with a company to sell, to resell the Chromebooks, and I will ask Technology for an update.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, what is the life expectancy of a Chromebook?
Uh, five years.
Do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero, thank you. Now, we have a summer ESY program in Melissa Fay.
Good evening, everybody. Is this on? Yes. Thank you for having me. Um, so we have our extended school year program, which is a program for students with IEPs with special needs in the district, um, who would otherwise, if they didn't have a program in the summer, have significant regression, either socially or academically. So this year, we have about a hundred and twenty-five students thus far participating. This is our first year doing all of our paperwork electronically, which is super exciting. It was a big, um, shift for our, our staff to kind of shift over, and it, for the parents as well, it was tough for a lot of people to kind of figure out how to do the, all of the forms online this year, but I think moving forward, it's going to be much easier. And it collects all the data for us on a nice spreadsheet, so we can keep track of everything on one spreadsheet, which is beautiful. Um, so we have about a hundred and twenty-five students thus far. We start July seventh, and we're going to be running through, um, August seventh for the six-week program and the week before for the five-week program. Um, we have two sites this year. We have the elementary school for pre-K to grade seven, and the high school's gonna house the eighth grade and up, so up until our twenty-two program, the young adult program. And so, we will be serving, right now, breakfast. We're still trying to figure out the lunch piece of it, um, so we'll be making that announcement hopefully soon, so that parents and guardians can know what the situation is for lunch, but breakfast will absolutely be served at this point. And we are just missing a couple of staff that we still have to hire, but we still have postings up, and we're hopeful that we will fill those positions before, uh, the end of hopefully this week or at the latest next week.
What are the hours of the program?
The program runs half-days, and so it's eight-thirty to eleven-thirty, Monday through Thursday. We have Fridays off. We have approximately, with everything, I would say about thirty-two staff. We may, it, it always depends on, we, we always have kind of last-minute families that show up that either missed the paperwork or were away, or, so when we kind of catch up with all of the families, we may have some extra people and might have to add, add some additional staff to support them, but.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have questions?
I don't have any questions, but I want to say I was contacted today to be a host for students to come out doing their job exploration, or, so I'm really excited about that. So I'm excited to have kids come back.
Yeah, we have a fabulous employment specialist, and I know Joyce has been very gracious at helping a lot of our students out.
Just excited that they get to come back.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Six months ago, approximately, plus or minus, I had the feeling that trying to hire people, almost anybody, was next to impossible. Has that improved significantly?
In my experience, no.
So you're still struggling?
Yes.
You remain optimistic?
I am always, I am forever the optimist.
I appreciate that. But, bottom line is, you've got two or three people that you need to hire, and you've got your fingers crossed, and you remain optimistic, but it's still tough.
It's tough. It, it, we have a lot of, um, a lot of people that, we filled most of our positions internally, which is great, um, but we have probably ten percent of our positions that we could not fill internally, so we had to post out. And some we have to reach out to agencies for because there's just nobody applying to the position, so it's just, it's tough. And I think a lot of it is gas prices, people don't want to drive far. I think because it's a half-day as opposed to a full day, that makes it even more difficult to pay the money for the gas to drive to Wareham from wherever they live, so I think there's a lot of different factors.
And that's my second question. Is it literally supply, or is it the salary structure?
No, I would say it's both, a little bit of both. And I don't know so much that it's a salary structure as much as it's the price of gas right now. People just aren't willing to, to drive from too far away for a part-time job, is really, I think, the bottom line, because I, I even asked the agency, we've, we've probably interviewed four people from an agency, and I said, "What are we doing wrong that nobody wants to come?" And she said, "Nobody wants to do the drive because of the gas prices for, for a part-time position."
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's difficult, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, next up, uh, we have some more summer programming to talk about. Jane, thank you.
Hey, good evening. So, um, the office of beyond school time for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year and summer, um, in the office, we have over thirteen grants totaling over nine-hundred thousand. We have a busy summer. We have three locations, so to break it down, at the Wareham Elementary School, we're going to have the Care Program, which is for kindergarten grade seven. We have a hundred and forty-five students. It is Monday through Thursday, six weeks. It's going to start August elec, August, July eleventh and end August eighteenth. Boost, we have forty-two students. That is also full days, Monday through Thursday, but it's a five-week program, not a six-week. We are bringing back, again this year, the Boot Camp, which is for incoming kindergarten students. We do it two mornings a week. There's fourteen students enrolled, um, and that's for six weeks. And, so, so far, at the elementary school, we have a total of two-hundred-and-one students currently enrolled. At the middle school, we're going to have the Accelerated Academy that we were afforded the opportunity last year to do due to COVID, to provide, um, academics for that, uh, learning loss. So, that academy will take place again for six weeks, Monday through Thursday. It is a half-day, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. At the middle school, they'll focus on ELA and math, and there are sixty students so far there, or they expect sixty students.
And what, with the grade, on, the grades on those?
Uh, at the middle school, it's, uh, students in grades five through seven. Yeah. We are having our first past summer program. We received a grant, so we have approximately fifteen students that are going to be taking a five-week summer program, Monday through Thursday, from nine to twelve. And so, right now, at the middle school, they, they'll probably have about seventy-five students in the building. At the high school, they've got the Accelerated Academy as well. They focus on English and math, but they do social studies, science, because they do the eighth grade right through to twelfth grade. They expect about thirty-five to forty-five students. It's Monday through Thursday as well. It's a half-day, eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. We have the Sale Program, which is the Twenty-First Century Grant. We call it CARE for K to seven. We call it Sale for the high school, eighth through twelfth. They usually have approximately forty to sixty students that enroll, and those students, a lot of them enroll to do credit recovery, so they can earn back some credits that they might have lost this year. So they're going to have about a hundred and five students at the high school. We also are excited because we were awarded a thirty-five-thousand-dollar grant that we have started a, um, high school internship program this summer for six weeks. We have a coordinator. We've got nine great high school students that are participating. We actually did our four-hour training today, um, so we're excited to have them. They'll be working at the elementary school. And that's our programming.
Jeff?
Could you tell me a little bit more about the, first of all, are the, all those numbers that you quoted, which frankly, I found impressive, are they similar to what you've had in prior years?
They're higher than last year, because now they don't have to wear the mask, so everybody's a little more relaxed. Yeah, I would say, I would say it's about the same. The difference is, we're splitting between the elementary school, last year, we were all at the middle school and the high school, but we're giving the middle school, um, a break and sending a lot of the programming over to the new school. But, in, in its heyday, yeah, there was always, because this is a total of, yeah, it usually hits around four-hundred students with all of the programming.
Okay, and this last program you mentioned involving high school?
The internship?
The internship. Who are these kids, what grade, and what are they actually doing?
So, the, the Department of Education, the Twenty-First Century Grants, um, decided to do this, this summer, and the students had to apply. We, they preferably wanted students who were going to possibly go into the education field and give them the opportunity to see that maybe the positions aren't just teachers, but there's many opportunities in the field, and it was open to eighth through, you know, twelfth-grade students, but most of our, the nine students range between age of fourteen and sixteen, most of them. One, one is an eighth grader, and most of them are freshmen or sophomore. Seventy-five percent of them, which, which is really nice, um, they have done the after-school programming and summer programming since elementary into middle school, so they're coming back, and they'll get paid. It's a paid internship.
That was my next question. What kind of stipends are we offering?
They get fifteen dollars an hour.
That's not bad. I'm pleased to hear that, because the interactions I have with, with kids are, you know, they're all working.
Right.
And so, I was going to be amazed if you got them to do it for nothing, so. Yeah.
Plus, um, Mr. Ballardino, with the amount of hours, they're doing a hundred and forty-four hours over the course of the six weeks, plus their trainings, and then reflection day at the end, so they'll also be earning five credits for doing the program.
Wow. And this was only possible because of the thirty-five-thousand-dollar grant?
Yeah. There's a few, there's a few sites in Massachusetts, Twenty-First Century sites, that God awarded the money.
Very nice. Very nice. I hope you got it renewed.
Cross our fingers.
Andrea?
I just wanted to add that last year, we were able to hire high school students to come and help with the Boost Program. And the, the biggest compliment to the program, I think, is that the same high school students plus one are coming back to do the same work this year, so, and they get paid as well. But it's just really, they know the, they know the ropes, they know how it works, and so they team up and they work with those kids, and it's amazing.
Now, just to be clear, this is going to take place at the elementary school?
Yes.
And this had nothing to do with the fact that it's a palace and they want to be there this summer in this air-conditioned splendor?
No, they were at Deacon's last year.
Well, it's air-conditioned splendor.
Yeah. No, they really. No, they just enjoyed it so well, and they're a good group.
They enjoyed it.
And that's not part of the internship. We just had, because of COVID, we were having, well, hate to say we're fortunate, because COVID wasn't fortunate, but, um, we had extra funds, so we've been able to keep the high school kids, those, that group, coming back.
It's a great place to have the program, that's the bottom line.
The elementary school?
Yeah.
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 And we're also.
Summer, oh, yeah.
And we're adding pickleball, so.
That's right, they're going to build the courts.
Yeah, we already have two instructors that are going to do it in the afternoon with our kids.
Where'd you find them? Everybody, everybody plays pickleball now, right?
I know. I can't wait to see it.
Yeah.
Any other question, any other question, Anne, in April?
I'm like, who's Anne? So, with the, the number of students that come for, like, the Boost or the Sale Program or the Ki, whichever one is, I think they all probably tend to lean towards assisting with learning loss and make up credits. Have you, what is the, I'm sure Andrea might love this question, the data to back up the, how well these programs work for those students once they resume their regular school year in the fall? Do we have any of that?
Well, between, so, for the Twenty-First Century Grants, which is your CARE and Sale, that's the bulk of the programming, and we have our own data. We do sales, and at the end of the program, in the fall, I can share with you the results of the data. We pre-impose survey, all the, all the ser, all the teachers, the students get surveyed, we do observations, and, um, all of our programming has to have an academic focus, which is ELA. But all of the programming is hands-on, project-based, engaging, challenging, but in an enriching way. And then, I work closely with Andrea to use the school day data so that we can see how our kids have progressed, because many of our students do repetitive sessions. They're with us from third grade on, so we can compare their growth.
Now, does the continuation of getting this grant yearly, do the grant providers look at that information as a basis? And does the grant amount increase or decrease based on that, or is it a standard amount year to year?
Yeah, that's not.
I'm just curious how it works.
We wish it would work that way, but it doesn't, it, it's a disincentive system. So in other words, we, we collect the data, and we, we get excited when it's successful, and we wait for their decision, basically. But it has nothing to do with whether or not we're doing well or not.
For example, we have three rolling off right now, going back to competitive, so, but the amounts lessen every year, but they expect you to maintain this programming for this amount of money. So, yeah. So leveraging.
Typical, it's typical.
Yeah. Leveraging of resources is important.
Joyce?
I just want to say it's really impressive, the amount of programming that you're able to offer, and, so, are you, if there's a student who needs to come to school, you're able to find a spot for them?
We, we do our best.
Yeah.
We do our absolute best. You know, we have over eighty-four staff working this summer. We could use a little more, too, but, again, it's just going to be putting the pieces of the puzzle together, because it's juggling all those schedules, because the students take, over the course of the four days, they're in five different classes throughout the week, so it's a lot of moving pieces, but no, we try to get every student in if possible.
Okay, and just to be clear, there is no fee for any of these programs?
No.
Right, so, okay.
And there's transportation, breakfast, lunch, yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't think another community that offers this kind of service to anyone, anywhere.
I mean, I don't know those facts, but I'm.
It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry that I left off in my good news about the graduation for the past program, because that is one of my favorite things to go to every year. It was, it was really great.
I agree. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Good luck this summer, thanks. All right, next up, we have proposed substitute bus driver rates. And making her first official appearance.
I am, yes. So, in your pocket, you have the proposed bus driver rates, and, let's see, let me make sure I have it with me here. I had my other report ready. Ah, here it is. So, the Director of Transportation, um, I believe with Dr. Shaverhood, has come up with some proposed, uh, pay rates for substitute bus drivers and seven-D drivers. So you can see them, um, right here, based on experience, one to two years, three to five years, five to ten years, eleven-plus years. And currently, the full-time CDL drivers are at thirty-two, so this is for the substitute bus drivers and seven-D drivers. And there's also the listing of the seven-D rates as well, um, and also comparative, what our seven-D out-of-district vendors are, their rates. So, um, I believe this requires a vote.
Any questions? April?
Are these competitive with area drivers, what their substitute rates are, or are we trying to be higher than them to attract drivers, or is this for substitutes only?
This is for substitutes only.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Joyce?
What, is this substantially higher than what we pay now? What, what are the rates now?
That, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the rates are now.
Well, really, the re, one of the reasons why we are asking you to vote, because we didn't have a standard. We had really never had any sub, subs, but as we're trying to get more drivers and focusing on seven-D drivers, we wanted to have a standard of where we would pay people, so there was no question. In the past, we brought in maybe, uh, a couple, and they were at different levels, and so nothing was really uniform, and this is, this is why we're asking, because we believe this needs to have a uniform scale that we pay people on.
Okay. And April, to your point, I go to the Cape Cod Collaborative Meetings, and it is often mentioned that Wareham is at the top of the pay scale for bus drivers, much to the chagrin of other towns who are trying to attract bus drivers, so, yeah.
Good to know.
I'm just confused by one thing. It says currently, all of our full-time CDL drivers are at thirty-two, but even with eleven years' experience, it's only says twenty-nine. I'm just, am I missing something there? Are we offering pay lower than what they're currently getting?
This is for a sub.
Oh, this is just, okay, okay. That's what's different, all right, thank you.
Full-time people are that.
Oh, okay, all right, that, thank you, that's all I get.
So I would make a motion to approve.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Five zero zero. Thank you. But don't go anywhere, because now we have the report of the Director of Finance and budget transfers and hourly wages.
Good evening again. I have some budget transfers that require per-school committee policy, school committee review and vote. What I did, since I've, this, I've just been here for about a week and a half, two weeks now, so, um, I took a look, and I know what I did was I picked out any of the accounts that were, that required more than a twenty-five-thousand-dollar transfer as per school committee policy. So there are some other accounts that are in deficit that may or may not require a, a budget transfer, but we'll know more as we get, close the books towards year-end. So, as the payroll hits every week, some, some of these accounts may be going into deficit, but these were the ones that, um, you know, taking a look at it, were the ones that absolutely needed to have a budget transfer. So, what I did was, um, I reviewed a lot of the accounts with Dr. Shaverhood to know, you know, a year from now, I'll have a good handle on, on where there may be some surpluses, where there are deficits in the budget, but not, um, having had a year's worth with this budget or developing it. You know, I wasn't, I didn't want to make a situation worse by transferring from what appeared to have money, only to find out that that's something that will not in a few weeks. So, so we worked on that, and that's what you see here. So, we're transferring, um, most of the money into clerical salaries, substitute teachers and nurses, um, mostly, yes, mostly substitute teachers and nurses and some clerical salaries, because I believe with the clerical salaries, there was just a change in, in position and a change in cost center, so that's the result of that. And then, where the money is coming from, you can see the list of accounts there, and these were accounts that we identified that, um, were not going to need the, the balance that was left. So you can see, what I did was, and I put the current budget as of June tenth, what was in that account, what the transfer result was, what the transfer request was, and then the revised budget after the transfer, so you can see what those accounts will look like. And again, um, we still have some bills that we're paying and some payrolls that are going to be going through, so throughout, you know, the course of the next several weeks, there'll be a lot of, um, changes to the, to the balances in the budget. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question. Can I ask my question?
Joyce?
I just don't see any transportation accounts on here, so does that mean that all of the transport, that none of the transportation accounts are in a deficit?
They were in a deficit, but they were not, they didn't reach the, I was able to do some transfers just today within the confines of less than twenty-five thousand, and within the, um, three-thousand account structure within that major account, there were some funds in some other accounts.
Okay, okay.
But I do anticipate that by the end of the month, there will be some more transfers, and some may require, um, school committee approval, review and approval.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jeff?
So, you had four major accounts that looked like they had some serious issues. In doing this review, uh, with which I have no problem, um, what was your overall level of comfort if you were able to get one, uh, with regard to, um, how we're going to come out at the end of the year?
I'm working on, I'm continuing to work on that now. I did identify, as of today and as of earlier this week, all of the deficits, and working with Dr. Shaverhood on some areas that we felt that there was going to be some money. At that, at that point, it seemed like, um, with the knowledge that I had at the time, that the deficits were less than what we could transfer into. Now, you know, that's, I do this, you know, every year at this time, I'm continuing to run the budget, maybe at least once, if not twice, a week at this point in time in the, in the fiscal year, just to, you know, make sure, and especially now, I'm not having familiarity with, with this budget, you know, I'll be, that'll be my major focus over the next couple of weeks.
But you're not in panic mode?
No, I, I am not, however, um, you know.
However?
Sometimes, you know, what, you, you may not, what I don't know is what I don't know, right? I mean, if I was in a district that I was going to be in, you know, that I was in for, you know, for many, many years, I could answer that question with a lot more comfort, because I knew what to expect. So, at this time, I keep saying that, at this time next year, I'll be able to answer a lot of these questions more accurately and confidently.
The, I can't remember, you may have mentioned this, the software that you're being asked to use. How do you find it?
Um, it's not the one that I used in my former district, um, so, it's, you know, when you learn anything new, and, and people have asked me that, it's, I think it's unfair to give an opinion, because right now, I'm learning how to use it, so I'm sure that once I, you know, know how to pull the reports and get the information that I need, I will think that it's, you know, I, I will have a better opinion of it, but right now, it's, you know, I will say, it is a little bit, um, of a struggle, because, but I think that would be anywhere if you went from one system to another. But, yeah, so it is, but, it, you know, to quote someone else, it is what it is, so we'll do our best and, you know, learn how to get what I need out of it and get some what I need out of it and get some training.
My, my final question is, have you had any interactions with the town side?
Yes, I have, I have.
Okay, could you describe them for us?
They were very pleasant. Everyone, everybody from the school to the town, folks that I've met, everybody has been welcoming, has been kind, has been helpful. They've reached out to me to check in on me, and, you know, every, you know, when I've asked a few questions, I've gotten an answer right away, and I felt very, you know, I felt very at ease, just availing myself as the, as the new kid to, to ask for, for help. So it's, my interactions have been very good so far.
You have no idea how thrilled I am to hear that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to accept the transfers as presented?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Standing five zero zero. Thank you.
And I do have some other rates that I'd like to review with you. These are the hourly rates that are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement or an individual contract. And what, what we're trying to do here is just have a standardized sheet, so that, you know, everyone knows what the rates are for these positions that aren't covered, like I said, by a collective bargaining agreement or individual contract, so that the hiring principals, directors know what to, you know, communicate to people, so that prospective hires know what to expect, and also so that there's something that payroll and HR can refer to, to have something standardized. So from my understanding, these are the rates that are in force, but we just want to get them down, you know, and reviewed and approved. There are two changes, and you'll see those that have the bolded proposed. It's about, not quite halfway down, substitute nurse and substitute cafeteria. So those, those rates are being proposed to increase. The substitute nurse, right now, a lot of times, I, the LPNs are coming in to sub, and they're currently making $28 an hour, so to have them sub and take $25, it's, you know, it just, it's not, it just doesn't make sense. So that's, that's being proposed for the substitute nurse. And also, the substitute cafeteria is being proposed to increase by 50 cents to 15.50. Now, as you may know, the, the CAF is funded on its own, it's, it's self-operating through the school lunch revolving fund, so it's not going to affect the local budget. And I believe this is an attempt, minimum wage is increasing to $15 as of January 1st, so this is probably an attempt to keep, you know, competitive and get people in to come and work in our cafeterias. I know in my former district, we tried to be a little bit ahead sometimes of minimum wage to, to get people to come in.
April?
So on this sheet, you have, when it says substitute cafeteria, is that substitute cafeteria, like the servers, people cooking, working in the kitchen? But then you have cafeteria monitors are at 15. So, I mean, do you feel like that separation, would, do you think that that 50 cents is enough of a separation of those two positions and what the job entails, or do you feel like that could cause discord in that, in those, in that area?
I'm not sure, because I haven't, you know, I haven't seen the cafeteria and the monitors in action enough. I know, I believe these were proposed by the food service director.
Okay. That's why, I just wasn't sure if that was where that came from. So, okay, thank you.
I'm confident that, you know, hopefully that'll work out for them.
Jeff?
So when you have school nurse, substitute nurse, this is, I assume, a school nurse, yeah. Are there, is that, should I construe that that means registered nurse?
I think it can probably be an LPN also. I, I mean, I think we can use LPNs. We, I have in the past. I'm not sure if that's what's in practice here in Wareham.
Yes, this would cover a couple situations. It would be the school nurse when they're out, but also, we have a number of students who have a need for nursing, and so if that person is out, we have to have sub coverage. So this would be covered. The, the only piece that I would add, if we have an LPN that covers for an RN, we send another nurse from another building over to hand out the meds, because an LPN does not hand out meds.
Understood. But my, my point was, if this substitute nurse could be a, have very different qualifications, do, are we really paying the same thing for someone with an LPN versus an RN versus a BSN?
And the pay structure probably for the regular full-time nurses and LPNs is different.
No, I'm talking about the substitute nurse.
Right.
Because you, you, you have LPN $28 an hour.
Yes, yes.
So if someone was a substitute nurse with a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, would we pay them exactly the same?
We would come over, and there's another scale that's not listed on here.
Ah, okay.
And I believe it's 125.
Okay, is there a particular reason it's not listed here?
No, it was just, I left it off.
Okay. I mean, I love the fact that you've got the sheet. I've been on the school committee now, I can't believe it, 14 years, and I've never seen a sheet like this. So I, I like the organization that this implies. So I'm sure it's a dynamic document, and you can keep adding things to it as, as, as it applies. Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Standing, okay, five zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristin.
We have reported the superintendent.
Okay. Just a second. I think my first person is here. And I also have a guest joining me on Zoom, Matt, Colonel Stanton. Can you hear me? I can. How are you? I'm well. So please, I'm going to put the mic down by you. Good, thank you for coming in. Michael, I also have.
Hey Jeff, what are you doing?
I have Colonel Stanton with us too. Colonel Stanton's with us as well. He wanted to be here.
Okay. I can't speak very much because of my.
I believe we're going to have Lieutenant Colonel Stanton go first. He's at Fort Devens with some of our JROTC cadets, which is pretty appropriate for this presentation. So we'll turn it over to Lieutenant Colonel Stanton if we can.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Palladino. Can you hear me okay?
Hang on one second, Matt. Can we hear him okay?
I think so.
No, no, not coming over the microphone.
Is that Mike?
Testing, one, two, testing? Well, you know, I, I couldn't think of a more appropriate way to say thanks to Mike Collins for all he's done, especially for Wareham JROTC. I'm out at Fort Devens with the cadets from JROTC, from Massachusetts, Connecticut, and Rhode Island, a total of 18 schools. And none of this would be possible for Wareham without Mike Collins. I first met Mike in 2014, when I applied for this job, and Mike was on the interview committee. And I, clearly, how much Wareham meant to Mike, how much service to the community meant to Mike, how much the values that the Army espouses of honor, integrity, personal courage, all these values came out in that short conversation that we had during that interview process, where Mike was talking about the pride of Wareham, and how hard all of those in Wareham worked to get a JRC program in the town. And I have to tell you, we are the only town with a small school that has a JROTC program. Every other school is in a city, and it's a large school. So Mike, I don't know what you did, but the people that you spoke to, the congressman, the school committee, the administration, and I don't know how the heck you cut through the bureaucracy of the United States Army to get a JROTC program at Wareham High School. But I know why you did it. You did it because you wanted to continue to make Wareham a hallmark for other communities, to live by the values of selfless service, giving back to the community, being, taking pride in other organizations that are larger than yourself, living a quality life of purpose. So Mike, I'm, I'm on this call tonight to thank you on behalf of the hundreds and perhaps thousands of cadets that have gone through JROTC since you got this program started. I can't thank you enough. You've been a true and valued friend. All your advice you've given me over the years, the pride in which you talk about your military service, it means so much to me, and I know it means so much to the many members of the community. So I'm here to pay tribute to you, Mike, and to your family, for how much that you've stood by the town of Wareham and JROTC. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Now, I didn't tell Mike he was being recognized tonight. He thinks he's here to celebrate the JROTC program, which we are, but ultimately, it was Mike that got started. And if I can take just a couple minutes, Michael Arthur Collins started teaching at Wareham High School in August 2003. During this time, he was still active in the Army, and he recently left the post office. Mike taught social studies at the high school for 11 years and was a dean for three years. After retiring from Wareham High School, Mike continued his passion of teaching history at night school through the Wareham Pass Program until 2020. Mike was passionate about history, and he'd often shown me various war artifacts he collected over the years and had in his classroom. During Mike's first year teaching, think about this, your first year teaching, somehow, he found the time and the energy to start the US Army JROTC application. That's amazing. And you heard from Lieutenant Colonel Stanton about all of the, the things that he's done over the years for the JROTC program, but just getting it started is amazing. This obviously required a lot of work. Matt alluded to the fact that the politics that's behind it, but Mike had a lot of connections and a ton of political support to get this through all of that bureaucracy. Needless to say, Mike and the Wareham High School administration was able to make this happen. The program officially started in August of 2004, excuse me, and has been an institution in Wareham High School since. The Wareham High School JROTC program has continued to receive awards through the US Army and Cadet Command, and is considered a program with distinction. We are the only non-city school, as Matt said, in Massachusetts to have such a program through the US Army. We are very fortunate, and the students don't forget that. Thousands of hours of community service are performed each year by this program. I just want to say that Mike is just a, a great family man, and it has been a pleasure having him in the Wareham Public Schools. He had the pleasure of having his children, Kate, Maureen, and Michael, in school at different points in time during his tenure. And I just want to thank Patty for allowing us to have Mike make such an impact over the years. I did the calculations, Mike, and, and Lieutenant Colonel Stanton was pretty close. He's taught over 1,500 students, and there are over 800 students that have been enrolled in JROTC over the past 17 years. That is quite an impact on the community, Mike and all. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mike, if I could just add, on behalf of the school committee, I want to thank you for your service, not only to the country, but to Wareham. My son Nick had you as a teacher, and you, he still remembers you fondly as one of his favorite teachers, and coincidentally or not, he did enter the military after graduating from college. So you have that influence, and really, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Kevin. Good to see you too, by the way.
I just want to thank you. I think, when I first came to, to Wareham, and I saw the JROTC, I thought, what a wonderful program. And so through the years, I would say, oh, invite me over when you're doing target practice, and we would have, you know, a little contest. But it's been a wonderful outlet for students, and I'm so grateful that you helped us give that back to our kids. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you for your years of.
Your service.
All right, Dr. Shaver Hood, you may continue with your report. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask the committee to please approve the bill and payroll warrants as listed in your newsletter.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Standing five zero zero.
I have two gifts. The first, Mr. Chadwick has donated 10 mosquito traps for our fields. I would ask the committee to please accept those 10 traps, and $500 from ExxonMobil to the Wareham Middle School to be used in science, technology, mathematics, or STEM. So I would ask the committee to please accept the two gifts.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Five zero zero.
Okay. Next, I have our SRO, and it looks like our detective, Dean Smith. We're going, De- DeGus, yes. We're going to do a little bit about school safety, and so I thought, who better to give you an overview but our SRO?
No pressure, Carl.
Oh, yes, please.
I was going to say, he doesn't get to sit in the back of the room.
Oh, I can't wait to hear Joyce's questions.
So I would just like to, to start and to let you know that, you know, I, while I worry about many things, I never worry about the protection and the, the caring that our police provide for us. They care about our students, they care about our safety, and I would never want to be on the side of Carl if he would find a door open or something like that, because it would not be a pretty sight. But I just want to thank them, because it's, it's great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let us know what all we do.
As I said, I didn't prepare for this, but any questions we got in it? I'm not going to say what our safety measures are. I don't want people to know it. The staff knows it, kids know it. It's nothing I'm going to put out in the public. We are well, you know, we are well protected, and we'll go from there.
Brennan, you have a question?
Is there anything more that we can do? Is there any more support we could give to you? Anything that you guys feel that you need to do your job better?
It's, it's more of an education thing. Everyone has to, you know, it's happened other places, so we have to take that mindset that it can happen here. Will it happen here? Probably not, but it can. And we have to make sure that we take all the precautions. Believe me, I ride Scott every day when I see something or someone, you know, he understands. I send Dr. Shaver Hood emails. We have to pay attention, and we have to do things the right way. And every, and it's everyone. It's not just me in the building keeping everyone safe. Everyone has to keep themselves safe. So they have to understand that. You know, pull the door shut when you come in. When you leave, push it shut. Don't let no one tailgate on, you know, with you. High school's great, front door, you only use one door during the school day. Mr. Sweat can tell you, he's been denied going in the school at times. And it's just, it's just the way it has to be sometimes. We have to take those precautions, you know? We have to. And with, you know, there's no, you know, we can't joke anymore about, you know, firearms, or we can't, you know, and Scott deals with it every day, because kids, you know, they say things, they, you know, kids are going to say things, you know? So when you're at a high school, you know right and wrong. You know, maybe a little two-year-old, you know, excuse me, a second grader might not know as much, but, you know, it's, it's serious, and we have to take it serious.
How many times a year would you say, I'm sorry, do, do we practice either ALICE training or something like that?
We do it twice a year, three times a year. You know, it's always talked about. They have advisory at the high school, so they're always, they're always going through it with the, in the advisory. So the actual drills, I, you know, I'd like to do it as much times the fire department does theirs, and I think, is that six times a year, I believe? Four times a year? Yeah. Yeah. I'd, I'd like to do it, you know, as many times. You know, I think the active shooter, active intruder, you know, when was the last time something happened in a school with a fire? But it seems like fire has all these regulations, and, and the law enforcement doesn't, which is, needs to change. Definitely needs to change.
April?
I don't so much have a question, as I just want to thank you, because I know not only do you do everything and more in your power to make sure that our kids aren't doing dumb things, but I, I know that in other aspects, you have helped out, and the police department has helped out with, with students or at-risk students, getting, helping get them involved in extracurricular activities if they're, you know, if you feel that that's a direction that they've needed to go. I know that we worked with you when I was on the board. I know that we worked with you when I was on the board for the Tigers and you guys did some amazing things for a lot of kids that probably really helped prevent them from possibly going down a path that could have been detrimental to them. So aside from, you know, just doing, you know, your traditional student, you know, school resource officer job, I know that the entire department goes above and beyond to really try to reach kids that I've witnessed and I think that it's, it's a huge testament to how much our department cares and it's great that so many people on our department are from Wareham, grew up in Wareham, live in Wareham. So you're not only working in the community, you are the community and I think that's a huge thing for the kids in the town to see and appreciate.
Right. I, you know, I say it all the time, I just try to be the person I needed at that age, you know? Kevin's an old man, he's been around, you know, I needed someone, I really needed, I needed someone like myself because I talk real to these kids, I talk truthful to these kids and that's the person I needed, so that's how I try to go. You know, I just, and I tell them that. I tell them, you know, I wasn't the best student, I wasn't the best student at all, but I understand how things have to be, you know? And it's, you can't always point your fingers, you've got to sometimes point it back at yourself, so.
Joyce?
Well, first of all, Kevin doesn't like it when you call him old.
He's older than me.
I just, I don't really have a question either. I just wanted to say that I know you talk about the high school, but we just met for, we just decided it was over five years that we met to build the new elementary school and the police department, Dean and many members of the police department, yourself, you were involved in that. So it's not just at the high school, it's at all levels.
No, no, it's not just the high school. Scott's here, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Keep him honest, yeah.
So, I mean, we're really fortunate as a community. I guess this is my theme tonight as our, you know, community, we're really fortunate and like Dr. Shaverhood said, we hear those terrible stories about what happens. I just think to myself, that wouldn't happen here because of the community and the partnerships that we have, so, thank you.
You're right. It wouldn't happen here and it's not going to happen here. It's just that we have to, we all have to pay attention, you know, and just, and it's the small things, you know? And who knows what happened in Texas? You know, the truth will come out, you know, a couple of years, but if it was an open door, someone, someone left that door open, you know?
Well, I think it's important, I understand you don't want to talk about details of safety, but I think it's important that we just talk about it so that people know that you're talking about it with school administration and that there are plans and practices and policies and procedures in place.
And as I say, I say, you know, when you go to bed at night, do you make sure your door's secure? You got, your kids are there, whatever, so the same thing. When you walk in a building, you can't just assume it's going to latch. It takes a second to turn around and, you know, and we do our training and we, you know, we'll, we'll do the, we call it the sitting duck and we just put everyone in the corner how we used to be and then we have an airsoft, whatever, when we shoot and however many get shot, you know? And we say, okay, they're not coming tomorrow, so this is what your classroom's going to look like, you know? There's 20 in this classroom, 15, so only five are coming back tomorrow. We try to make them, you know, realize, in reality, the staff members to understand that this, this, you know, but it's not just school. The training that we do is not just school-based, it's, it's life, it's, you know? I trained the girl, we had a bunch of SROs, Dean was part of it, and there was a girl in Middleboro, when the Taunton Mall happened, she grabbed a bunch of them and got them out and she said if it wasn't for the Alice training, that she wouldn't have known what to do. So, you know, that it happens at the mall, it happens in movies, it happens all over, you know?
Dr. Schwalm?
I just wanted to mention that every year when the new staff come, all new staff are invited and Carl actually forms a team on the first day back. When you, often you come and introduce yourselves and things like that, then I say some things and then at noon, they start their training with anyone who's new and they go through the whole process. So it's part of, it's been part of our procedures for the last seven or eight years now and so it's extremely important that we grab everyone right out of the gate and they're, they're brought in and, and trained well. And I think it makes a big difference when we begin. It's, it's right, right away.
Right. I think Angie's had me scheduled for five months now.
I do. I, yeah, I front-load everything, so I'm like, we'll be doing it on this date and they'll be, you know.
First time I say, Dean, are you available this day?
Jeff, you have a question?
So my reaction to Uvalde was, especially maybe 36, 72 hours later, was I could imagine being on the Uvalde School Committee, having people like yourselves in front of me saying how safe we were. And, and then a few weeks later, a month later, a year later, it happened. So, if we're having a beer or a glass of wine, I'd have a lot of questions I would ask you, but that would be inappropriate to ask you at this moment in time. Having said that, I do-
Well, I can tell you for myself, and I might be speaking out of line, I will not be waiting behind any doors.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Is there, is there anything about the current procedures, the current protocols that you think need to be changed in order to enhance the safety of our staff and students?
School policy?
Yeah.
I, I think the school department does excellent. And I, and I, as Kim said, she wouldn't want to be the one that, you know?
And if I asked Walter this question, you know, about police policy?
Right.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. What do you think he would, what do you think he would say?
I don't know what he'll say. As I'll say, I mean, I will not be waiting. That, that situation, if there's policy, if there's rules and regulations, I will violate every one of them.
But I don't want you to violate policies. I want the policies and protocols and procedures to be right, to be correct now. And are they, is my question?
Right. You have that answer?
It's a question to ask them. It's a question to ask our-
Administration.
Okay. Then, Mr. Chair?
I would like to ask that question.
Okay. We will put that on the future agenda.
I appreciate it.
Okay. I have two, oh.
Sorry, you can go ahead if you don't mind.
Just one practical and one philosophical. Practical, I heard you allude to this before. Do you regularly go around and make sure doors are locked?
Yep.
Perfect.
I, I don't walk by a door, an exterior door, that I don't check. I don't know why I walk by an exterior door that I don't check.
And second question, and this could go to Mr. Palladino as well as you. In terms of the training for the students, the more I read, the more it seems like students probably know something, maybe they get wind of something or they know kids that they have concerns about. Is that part of the training? See something, say something?
We tell them, yes. And, you know, I, one year I put up every, every active shooter event that was, and I think it was, I don't know, three rows?
Seven.
Six feet, you know, double row, you know, and I tell them, this, this can happen, you know? But they have to see something. It's not snitching, it's not ratting.
Right.
It's something, and we have it, we have it, you know? And half the stuff that we've gotten, Mr. Pall, you know, is because kids have, you know?
Good. I think if we can keep fostering that culture, that's one of the best things we can do to promote safety, too.
You know, you don't, a lot of things that you read up on, the kids usually tell, they, the kids will know first. They always try to recruit someone in, they always try to, you know, brag or boast. Or you see, you know, teachers also, you know, they're doodling and they're writing, look at that stuff, you know what I mean? Like if I go, if there's something, I go to a home, I, I look, I look at the paperwork in the house. I look to see, because they'll, they'll doodle it and they'll draw it and they'll make a list, you know? And, you know, I don't, things like that, so, see something, and I'll chase it, bad information all day long. I have no problem chasing that. I have no problem having Dean, you know, we got this, we got to go look at this, you know?
Thank you. April?
So I remembered it as more people were talking. I recently saw after the tragedy in Uvalde that students know the Alice training and that more of these incidents aren't an outside person. They are more likely to have gone through all of these trainings. And I know that in other parts of the country, some law enforcement aren't as up-to-date with those trainings that are being done or some of the trains that are being done in the schools and the protocols in each school. How do you feel that the communication with those policies with our law enforcement, with the students and that expectation? Because again, these kids have grown up sadly. I mean, since Columbine, our kids have grown up knowing that this is a possibility. And I saw a recent interview with a teacher who had a young student, this was an elementary school teacher, who said, well, we do all these trainings, so when it happens, we'll be ready. And what struck that teacher is that it didn't say if, the student said when. Which is horrifying that elementary school kids are mentally preparing themselves, that it's a huge possibility and that the disconnects in some instances, which I don't feel that is here, but do you feel that there is more that could be done collaboratively to adjust the training so that the, to make sure that law enforcement and the school and the student are, like that you know what to expect?
Right. So, so we're training, so you're saying the student that could be the next is, is learning the same thing, but what happened before was a sitting duck, so they know everyone's going to sit in the corner, so they know that's going to happen and they, they're not going to have any, any, anyone challenging them, anyone fleeing. And as we teach, it's called an oodle loop, you're distracted. You know, if you guys want to come to our training, we'll give you the date, you know, and I think it'd be good for you to see exactly what we do. And it's the distraction and it's, you know, you throw something at someone, there's no way, you know, and he might know the statistic, the staff a little better.
Well, the point is that we're giving them options.
Right.
A lot of options and no one knows what they're going to, what you're going to react to, or how you're going to react to it. You just have a lot of different options that you can take depending on the situation and without going into the specifics of it, nobody knows how anybody's going to react until it happens.
And in Sandy Hook, they ran right by this, you know, the FBI report, they ran right by them because this, this distraction, you know, you're coming in thinking you're going to have one thing and you have something different. Now it's like, whoa, what's going on here? You know? It's, the problem is when you hide and sit there and wait, you know, and going back to Columbine, this summer, I'll be, another couple of weeks, I'll be going to Colorado for the conference every year and it's going to be a big one, it's in Aurora. So we have the Aurora Police there talking about their shooting and then the Columbine, the Columbine Memorial is in Colorado, in the way of a memorial. So, and I bet Uvalde is going to be a big topic down there.
Well, I want to thank you for the committee, for your work with, with us, with the school system and the administrators and we hope to keep this partnership going and we will get an agenda item in the future with the chief, hopefully, to talk about policies as well. So, thank you.
The training is August 22nd at 12:00, the Wareham Middle School Auditorium.
August, you said? What, what day?
August 22nd.
August 22nd, okay.
Is this Alice?
Mm-hmm. 12:00.
Has it changed much since we went through it?
No. You did go, that's right, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
It's something, you know, you might want to see.
Yeah, definitely.
It's worthwhile.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, I have an adjustment in the school calendar. The DESI released makeup days for MCAS. It would be November 10th and, no, November 9th and 10th. We had a professional development day scheduled for November 10th and we need to move that because we may need to make up. So we proposed to move it to February 17th. It's a Friday, it's the Friday before the February break begins. I have checked it out with the union and they have no objection, so I would ask the committee to please amend the calendar.
April?
Would that be a no-school day for students, professional development for the staff?
Correct.
Okay. So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have settled two contracts with the cafeteria. The first would be with the cafeteria. Just to briefly go over the terms, we, in year one, it's a 5%. In year two, a 2.5 and in year three, a 2.5. We've increased satelliting and what satelliting means is bringing food to other areas to 1750. We've made a few other adjustments and what I would share with you is the food service salaries are paid through food service and does not touch LEA. We had food service staff, we had the director of food service along with our two school committee members negotiating this contract. I would ask the committee if you have no questions to please approve it. The cafeteria has approved the contract.
Any questions? Joyce?
I don't have any questions, but I served on that committee, so I just wanted to say thank you to the cafeteria workers and to Mr. Russo, who was, who did a great job for that negotiation. Went very well.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hold on, I think Jeff has a question.
Sorry, Jeff.
I'm trying to remember which contract it, it was involved in. Is there a shoe allowance in this contract?
Yes.
Yes.
Both of them?
No, there's one and both.
There's one and both.
Yeah.
One and both.
So my question has, well, in one case, there was a, there was a typo. I'm trying to remember whether it was the cafeteria or custodial contracts. It said 150, it wrote out 250 and it said 150. So whichever contract that is, and we need to correct that and I have no idea what, what the correct number is.
That too.
Thank you. But my question is, thank you. That says 150, the other one says 250. Unless it's been corrected, my copy. My question is, are, are specific shoes required?
I believe they mentioned that they wear, they're non-slip, like they're specific, like that a kid, someone working in a kitchen or in a restaurant would wear. There's a specific sole of the shoe, I believe, that prevents them from sliding.
Are custom shoes appropriate for that specific employment?
From, from what I was led to be understood during the negotiation, yes.
And now, and at this point, we're talking the cafeteria workers, correct? Okay. This, this says, yeah, I guess it was the other one where the typo, where it was the typo, so this is being raised for 100 to 150 for custom shoes.
Caf, like restaurant-specific shoes, yes.
That's skid.
Which means, of course, they're required to wear them as compared to regular shoes.
Correct, yes.
Okay. No problem then. I'll wait till the custodians.
So we'll take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
Thank you. The next would be the custodians. Their wage increase beginning in 20, July 2022, a 2%. The second year a 2.75 and the third year a 2.75. There were a few other changes throughout, uniform adjustments, the shoes moved to $250 with receipt. Foul weather gear, gear will be provided at certain times and there is a longevity added. It's a three-year contract. Again, it's been approved by the Custodial Association, so if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
And if your question, Jeff, is about the shoes, I was on that negotiation as well and the discussion was, I believe, about weather-specific, like for outdoor and indoor-appropriate for the job, for maintenance and for-
So they have specific shoes that are required to wear and we're essentially paying for them on an annual basis. And I'm trying to find that 250, which I read, but as long as it's, it says 150 in the copy I'm looking at, it was a, perhaps it was another copy. So bottom line, is it supposed to be, oh, I know what the problem is. Every time I call, this is why you sent that second, and what happens is every time I think I'm calling up the custodians, it ends up calling up the cafeteria workers. It's been mislabeled. So is the one that is specifically for the custodians, does it say 250?
Yes.
Okay, so that needs to be corrected to 150.
No, theirs is 250.
Okay, theirs is 250. And does it say, written out, and the number says 250? Then I saw an incorrect version of the contract. Fine, okay, I'm not going to quibble over $100. I just wanted to make sure the language was consistent.
All in favor? Oh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0-0.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have the class of 2023 prom vote.
Oh, my goodness.
Is this my son's prom?
I can't, I can't believe you already seen you. I feel like we were at DC last year.
Yeah.
Yes.
I want to just recognize Marion Karam, we have a senior class member who's going to talk to you about the prom. And I have Ms. Tarasconi, who is the class advisor. So we are going to turn it over to them. So go ahead.
Okay. So I'm here on behalf of the class 2023 to request the approval for prom, which is going to be on Saturday, May 13th on, in 2023. And it would be at the Falmouth Cape Club. And we don't have a price right now, but prom would pay for itself. And the ticket price is usually $75.
So that's quite a leap, you know, meaning it's going to pay for itself. You know what the price is going to be. So if I, how do I get comfortable that it's going to be the same price even though you don't know how expensive it's going to be?
It's been between $65 and $75 for the last 20 years for the senior prom. I don't think it's going to fluctuate much.
I understand that, but you don't know the price of this venue.
Because the price of food is changing daily. So we have to unfortunately wait a little while to get a final price. But we've never lost money at a prom in my tenure as principal. And I don't anticipate doing it next year. But we've also been able to keep the price below $75 or at $75 every year.
I do, don't need to remind you that inflation at this moment in time is, it has, is back. Before you were born, it's, that's how far back. So I remember the inflation, you don't.
Okay. So that's the unfortunate, the unfortunate part is to get a final price, it's going to take a little while. But this class is a phenomenal class. And I'm confident that they'll keep the price the same. We've had two proms here before.
And when you get a final price, you can bring it back to us, correct?
You could. If it goes over $75, we could bring it back to you.
Would you like that, Mr. Swat?
Oh, I would love that. Because I like to see students.
Days under 75, you don't have to see them.
There's incentive right there.
I guarantee after waiting tonight, they're not going to be back.
What? This is punishment? Oh. Well, I, I actually have a very active member of your class on my tennis team. And she has expressed concerns about, not about the management of it. I, I'm sure she has fought, about finding the right venue at the right price. So you're convinced you've found it?
Yes.
I'm not easy either. So I don't make, no, seriously, I don't, I don't make it easy on them because I don't let them have it on a school day because of what it does to that school day. So it's very difficult for them to find a venue that is willing to offer a prom on a Saturday. Because as you probably know, they make their money from the bar and there's no bar at a prom. So it's very difficult for that reason. But it's much better having a nice day on Friday of academics. And I think the families appreciate it as well. They don't have to rush home to see the promenade on a Friday or on a Tuesday like some schools. And I know the chaperones appreciate not being out till midnight on a school night as well. But it's just, it's a much better presentation. But it makes it extremely difficult when you're trying to find a location that's willing to have a prom on Saturday. They came to me probably about four months ago saying, we can't find a place. I mean, that's how difficult it is. So they've done a great job.
I was fully aware of that. And by the way, someone missed a tennis match because of the prom. So I expect you to deal with that.
April?
Ed's in the back. We'll work on the schedule for next year.
Mine isn't so much a question about this specifically, but are school committee members, if they're, who's eligible to be a chaperone at the prom? Because embarrassing my former cheerleaders and my child would be delightful.
You can embarrass them all you want at the promenade. You're more than welcome to be at the promenade.
He's like, get out.
Parents at the prom, unfortunately.
That I was, I wasn't, I have no doubt.
She was only half kidding.
I was only half serious. Half serious.
Totally serious.
Oh, I would, if I could have swapped my school committee hat for the mom hat, would have done it in a heartbeat. So.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to say, you know, I appreciate a prom that's a short distance away, which this is. So.
That's part of the requirement as well.
Yeah.
Has to be 45 miles or less away from Wareham High School.
And $75.
And $75.
So do I have a motion?
Motion through.
This year that was very expensive. So moved. Oh, sorry. We already moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have fun playing.
Five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Marion.
Thank you.
I heard you say it was hot, Mr. Palladino. Wait till this discussion. Just kidding. But next up on the, we're done with the superintendent's report, is that correct, Dr. Shipphood? Okay. SCC discussion and resolution. Mr. Palladino, Mr. Rodericks?
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Roderick's going to join me.
Excuse me, the way I'm dressed has come from the Little League games.
So I, I just have a few things that I'd like to share. And then certainly we'll entertain any questions. So at, at a previous school committee meeting, it was, it was discussed that athletics, that, about athletics, that administration has failed to address the issue of the Warehams competitive balance in the South Coast Conference. It was also said that current efforts are a little too late. I would disagree with that. And I'd like to take a couple of minutes to give you a little bit of a historical view of what has been done over the past 10 years on the competitive balance for Wareham and other small schools in the conference. The competitive balance that's in the South Coast Conference has been something we've been working on since I began as principal in 2010. In 2012, we started the discussion on expansion. And in 2015, the process began. In 2016, we agreed to add Somerset Berkeley into the conference to allow for the regional schools to be on the large side of the conference in their own division, and the single towns to be in their own division within the conference, ultimately creating two divisions in the conference. The goal was to give the small schools an opportunity to get more non-league games and to play, and to play the larger schools in the conference in crossover games only versus the traditional two times. Ultimately, this has helped, but it wasn't enough for the real small schools such as Bourne, Case, and Wareham. In 2018, Wareham High School and the Wareham Public Schools decided to add the eighth grade to the high school. There are many reasons for this. But one of the great reasons for this was to have athletes in our school and in our programs for five years. The results on this are not in, as we were kind of disrupted by pandemic. But I do believe that this will help over the next few years as these students become upperclassmen and have five seasons of experience. And we're seeing that in the tennis team, who will be in the state championship tomorrow. In 2020, we got rid of user fees, partly because of COVID, but also in hopes that more students would participate in programs that they may not be too invested in. I still believe some students and parents are still apprehensive to have their students be in school, around students for a long period of time, longer than they have to. Hopefully, this will subside soon and we'll see even more increased participation. Since 2019, we've been discussing adding two more schools to help out the smaller schools. Unfortunately, again, COVID caused a pause in this. But in 2021, we extended formal invitations to approximately 15 schools, neighboring schools. And it was narrowed down to five schools based on interest and fit for the conference. It was then narrowed down again to two schools. One was a large school and one was a small school, again, based on proximity, comparable, comparable size and comparable programs within the conference. The conference ultimately voted this down as they did not see how it would help the smaller or larger schools from a competitive standpoint. Unfortunately, the schools that were channeled down happened to be, would be the larger schools in the small conference and the larger schools in the large conference. They would be the largest of all five, which would eventually would have been 12 schools, six in each division. So unfortunately, that didn't go the way we had hoped it would have gone. We had hoped today to be able to tell you that we have two small schools in the conference and they're all equivalent to our size. And we were going to be real happy with that. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. I did vote in full disclosure to have those schools in because I felt like it was something that was needed. And it did have some residual effects on us that were positive. Unfortunately, it did not pass. I did share with the conference in the June meeting, a proposal that was presented to this, to the principals and was supported and then presented to the athletic directors, again, both in our June meetings. And this is the proposal that I will share with you tonight, that I am hoping is approved and would help out our athletic programs tremendously. And it'll be brief here with this. So basically, this would be for the 2023-2024 season, because everything we're talking about is for the 2023-2024 season. A school can designate if they are not interested in playing crossover games by the last day of the previous season. And the season is based on the MIA definition of a season, which if we're talking about tennis, the season ends tomorrow. This must be sent from the athletic director to all the other athletic directors in the conference by this date. Failure to send proper notification will mean status quo for the team in the concurrent season. Athletic directors will review this information at a subsequent meeting after the notification date has passed. This, this will allow plenty of time for teams to fill their schedules. It will also allow for better competitive balance and will help both teams as the stronger teams won't lose points based on the strength of schedule and the weaker teams can find competitive balance. It will also allow for smaller teams to build their program as success breeds success. The goal would be to bring back parity in the league. I have asked the principals and the athletic directors to make a formal vote on this in September. I will also have at that meeting a letter of intent to opt out of the league if it's not supported. So that is the update of athletics. I also just want to share with you the SCC bylaw pertinent to this situation. And basically, any school may withdraw from the conference, presenting this intention in writing one year in advance of the school year. So that is what I have to present to you tonight. And Ed and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Do you guys understand what that would mean at the end of the season? For an example, our boys' basketball team's been very strong. So at the end of that season, you've got to declare, well, I have, I don't have many kids coming back. We're not going to do well next year. So I want to opt out. So for an example, boys' basketball will probably never ever opt out. Girls' basketball probably will, will want to opt out. So now, what would happen then is they would just play the small schools, which would be a total of 10 games. And then they could have 10 non-league games. All right. So now, if you're strong, then you compete all season with it. It depends on, and if, as long as it's done, you know, as fair as possible, I, I think that would be a good thing. But all the schools would have to be on board. And now, would that add to the athletic director's job? Absolutely. Because now we've got to get some games for those games that they're not going to be playing, which is usually five to six games you're going to have to get. I, I don't, I don't consider it a problem. I really don't. I think it would be good for the smaller schools. Now they could compete. For example, when the athletic directors talked about it, us, Bourne and Wareham, were 100% for it. The other ones were 50/50. So.
Bourne, Bourne and Case.
Well, I'm sorry, Bourne and Case and Wareham were 100% for it. Because it helps them. So now, you know, our strong teams, we'll play all year like that. These teams are not so strong. They can have it both ways, so to speak. They can play some conference games, but yet some non-conference games, more non-conference.
And the way the MIA does the ratings now, as far as the competitive scale, you, teams that would play a weaker team and win could actually lose points versus playing a competitive team and losing. So it's a, it's a new dynamic that we're dealing with now.
It's crazy.
That's, has an impact. So I feel that it really is a win-win. Obviously, I'm looking at it from the Wareham standpoint. But also, when I step back and look at it from the conference standpoint, it has a lot of merit in regards to allowing for the teams that are really strong to go out and get a competitive game. And, and obviously, there's a reward. It's not just record, it's strength of schedule.
April?
So it would hypothetically, if they, if this were to pass and we say our team, our school opts out, they would have sort of like a hybrid, half-conference, half-independent schedule?
But the conference would be the small, the smallest.
Right. But that wouldn't hurt them, is what you're saying with the MIA standing?
No.
So they would still be able to do, like, say, like, conference championships or things of that nature, should they qualify? So if they opt out, there's no championship qualification? I'm just trying to clarify.
There are some things that would be lost from opting out. But I, you can't have it both ways, unfortunately.
No, understandable. And my second question is, should this not pass and you do write a letter of intent to leave the conference, do you have a conference in mind to, do you have to send a request to then join another conference? Do you have options for that?
Be independent for a year while we really spend a ton of time researching, making sure it's the right fit. There's about three options. We probably could narrow it down pretty quickly to two. And it, you know, and some of these teams in these different leagues, we play already. So we have good relationships with them. But we would want to make sure, we spend the time to make sure we thoroughly investigate what would be the best fit. We just don't want to just jump quickly because we have to jump. I think it would be wise to try and be independent for a year while we assess and speak to other schools and have meetings with other conferences.
Jeff?
Thank you.
So I want to see if I understand what you just said about championships. So you opt out, you only play the small schools, you don't play any of the larger schools. You play a bunch of other schools, hopefully, to make up your full schedule. But because you've opted out of playing the large schools, you would not be eligible for the gold championship.
Right. That's what boys' soccer and girls' soccer did last year. Exactly what you just said.
So you could beat every small school twice.
Yeah.
And still not be the champion of the
Because you're not playing those other five schools.
I hear you. And I understand the logic in one way. But in another way, it sounds, sounds
If we go independent, you don't have any of those options. So.
Well, and I can tell you, I'm not speaking for myself because I've tried to say, stay pretty neutral on this. But I know the coaches want to be able to have All-Stars, championships, et cetera. And
Can't have it both ways.
Well, we would be looking into a league.
Yes. We wouldn't stay neutral for
For us to jump right into it, I'm not sure that's the best thing either. So we make sure we're headed in the right direction.
We couldn't do the research between now and
Yeah, we could.
September to narrow it down from three to one.
Well, I, I think in September, we'll
Not one, not one.
In September, we'll, you know, we know where we are. I think that my concern is that we have to give a year's notice, right? So in September, we have to let them know one way or another where we're at. Now, if we're able to facilitate the process and feel real comfortable and make sure we've vetted this out very thoroughly, we could. But I'm just not sure we could spin it around that quickly. And I, I think we need, you need one year to be independent. And then we'd be able to slide in somewhere.
And my final question is, the principals vote. Do the ADs vote?
It's the principals' vote that matters. But obviously, we spend a lot of time, we have the professionals from within that are the athletic directors. Obviously, they vote first. And then when we get their
So their vote is a recommendation.
Correct. There you go.
And the principals either confirm or, got it. And do you have a read on the, this opt-out proposal?
I think the ADs were neutral on it. And the principals were optimistic about the plan. That's my read.
So in essence, they, they pull all the weight anyway. So.
I understand. I understand.
But you can't undermine your athletic director. You have to certainly consult.
So you constantly ask me to predict results.
And you've been pretty good, by the way.
So should I ask you to predict a result?
I'm going to say 1.5 to 3.5. How's that? That was a tennis score, by the way. You know, it's, it's, I, right now, I, I feel like I could give you a definite, you know, kind of spread on that. But the issue is, we have two new principals coming to the conference and I don't know where they stand. So it's, that's a dynamic that we'll have to address in September. But I know everyone wants a healthy conference. Everyone wants the conference to be competitive. Everyone wants to keep the schools that are in the conference, in the conference. So I, I think they'll support it, but maybe put a, like, kind of like a sunset clause on it to revisit. That's my guess. But again, it's, it's going to be a whole different dynamic with, you know, 20% new principals in the, in the meetings.
By the way, I will tell you parenthetically, this power ranking stuff, I think you guys are aware of what the power, the new system for, for the playoffs, every single person in the finals, all divisions, boys and girls, was ranked by power rankings in the top four.
It is, it is. I, I've been, I've been in shock that it, like, yours is one and two. Sum up, one and three, two and, I mean, that's out of 60 some odd teams.
So power rankings isn't going anywhere.
No.
No, it's, and it's been that way with other sports, too. It's not just, yeah, it's not just tennis.
They got, no, not just tennis. A lot of, but they have to tweak some things. Wins don't count that much. And
I agree. I'm into that.
The good thing is, South Coast Conference that we're in, nine of the 10 softball teams made the tournament, even with ridiculously losing records. Because they, they figure out conference is strong. And they're right. Vokes playing for the state championship. The other semifinal team was C-CO. I mean, you can go on and on and on. So being in the South Coast Conference does have some strong points. It's just that we need to win more games. Let's put it that way.
I have just a question about, so you mentioned maybe going independent, if the other option didn't come to pass in September, maybe going independent for a year to learn more about the other options. What are you going to learn in a year that we couldn't learn in the next month about the other league options? I guess, I guess, I don't understand the
I think, I think the tough part is I think the tough part is, you know, other conferences have bylaws as well.
Right, and they said that you could come in in 2023 if we wanted to.
Yeah, and I think that's something we'll have to definitely get on. I think, you know, you asked for a decision tonight, that's my decision. And, you know, if we have to... If we have a golden opportunity to jump into something that fits and is going to be great for our kids, then, you know, we wouldn't do the independent thing. It's just, you asked for us to give you a decision on where we are going to be with athletics, and that's why we're here tonight. But obviously, if in September this doesn't go well, and we start looking, and all of a sudden, there's an opportunity, we're not going to wait. Just because, we're going to come back to you and say, hey, this is an adjusted plan. We have this opportunity to go into conference X, and they have, you know, X number of teams and the same sports that we have, and they're in close proximity, same-sized schools. We'd be back here to do that. We wouldn't wait a year just because that's what we said. But we have to at least, you know, make a decision today. That's our decision today.
That's part of the problem. Some of these leagues, we have to look in, they don't have track, they don't have this, they have that. You know, it's not as... We've got to weigh...
No, I understand that, but that could be done in an hour conversation with an AD.
We have to really... Yeah, I don't know if we want to jump into something...
If they don't have a one-year clause, to your point, Kevin, I do think, like, you know, if we had a couple of months to really just speak with the conference, there's a whole process, obviously, that's involved, application, there's the presentation usually. We could streamline it. We're not going to say, oh, no, no, we're going to wait one year. Because it's a lot of work to be independent, as I'm sure you know as a former coach. Because, you know, when we go into this as a South Coast Conference member, we have potential for 18 games if we want it. So it's like, you could have... You only have to call one or two teams now to get 20 or 22 games versus if you're independent, you've got to get 11 and hope that you can do a home and home with all those to get the 22. So there's a lot of work, so it would definitely be... You know, if everything aligns, it would be in our best interest to try and jump in. You know, again, assuming things don't go well in September, and we have to hand over that piece of paper to the president of the South Coast Conference.
And as we said all along, this is not... It's not a decision that we're making or voting on. It's a decision that you're making, and as you said, what's best for Wayham students. So as long as that drives us, it'll be good.
Always does.
Yeah, that's the thing. We're trying to make sure we do the right thing here for Wayham High School.
Right.
You know, it's... There's a lot of things to look at in all, in these leagues to make sure. And then the final question is, they've got to want us. They've got to want us, you know?
I think we're a desirable school. I do think, I don't think that's going to be the issue. It's just a matter of, you know, does the conference, are they willing to expand? You know, do they have a number that just, you know, logistically works? Like, you know, and different conferences have different philosophies on what that number is. For years, it was nine total schools in the South Coast Conference. We weren't budging. Then we went to 10. And now with this year, we talked about going to 12, and it just wasn't the right... The schools weren't the right fit and the right size, and that's why it was voted down ultimately.
Anyone else, Joyce?
Well, I just want to say, as you just said very nicely, this isn't our decision, it's your decision. So I appreciate that you're having this conversation. But, I mean, athletics is a big part of the culture of the high school, right? And that, so that comes back to, we talk a lot about kids leaving, students leaving Wayham and going to other high schools. And even just recently, I've heard of kids who are contemplating leaving because of athletics at the high school. So it really is important. So I guess my question, the solution that you're proposing, sounds like a good solu... It sounds, actually, Jeff, you were asking those questions, it's already happening in a form at the high school. What you're describing could happen in September, right? You have teams playing half...
Right. No, in September, it will only happen with those teams now.
Oh.
It's just the soccer...
Just those, okay.
It'd be a year from now that it would have to change. It can't change later.
No, 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 I understand that. But it is already happening, I guess, in a small... I thought maybe it was more teams, but in a smaller form, okay.
It is, that's a great example. You're right, it's happening with those three teams. We were playing the smaller schools but not playing the larger. But that is a two-year agreement that ends after this next season.
So unfortunately, what you're describing is a kind of a long process. It doesn't sound long, but kids are only in high school for four or five years now in Wayham, right? So they're looking at their high school experience and what they want it to be. And so we need to work to make sure that's the best experience and what they want it to be, right? So you're doing that, so thank you. But as Kevin said, you know, if we can speed it up in any way, that would only...
September will be the big month where, you know...
We'll know a little bit more on the direction in September, we know where that's going to go and what we need to do.
So I guess...
There will be a decision in September. 100%, it has to be. Because otherwise, you're waiting a whole other year after that.
All right, because we thought there was going to be a decision tonight. But I understand it's out of your hands that the vote didn't go the way you thought it was going to go. But again, I'm just, I could just go back to the, you know, the kids. We can say, oh, in a few years, it's going to be better. But in a few years, those kids will be graduated. So they're thinking, well, if this is how it's going to be in Wayham, then maybe I'll go to a different school. And none of us want to see that. None of us want to see that. So how do the students and the coaches and the parents, do they know that you're...
We met with the coaches about a month ago. We met with the coaches on the awards night for the senior captains and two sport students. We met with all the coaches an hour before that presentation. So they're aware of what's going on, and Ed's been in communication as well with them, and obviously, they're in communication with the students, so...
All right, well, I mean, that's important that people know that you're aware, that, you know, that you're looking at other options to improve upon what's there, yeah? Okay. And then, so just one other conversation that we've had about sports is about middle school sports. And I understand that that is a big effort to make that happen again. I know you're the high school principal, not the middle school principal, but there is, you know, as the athletic director, there is some crossover there, right?
Yeah, but matter of fact, I was going to set up a meeting with Tracy Cote this next week for the future. Obviously, a new superintendent will be coming in, and then we'll go from there. But there's a lot of things to have a middle school athletic program that goes in.
I'm sure there is.
It would be... My position would have to be expanded, for sure. For sure.
I think the tough part is, we took the eighth graders out of the equation by moving them to the high school. So my brother happens to be a middle school principal that has a middle school program, and they only do it with seventh and eighth grade. So it would be, you want to talk about a competitive imbalance, that would be what we would have. I think what might be a better alternative, and I believe Dr. Shaverhood has brought it up before as a potential, maybe doing something more that's intermural in nature. And I'm not saying that's going to be a feeder program for too many sports teams, but it would be a nice little introduction. And it's been done before. Unfortunately, budget cuts, the program was cut. This was before Dr. Shaverhood was on board. And it was really nice because I happened to be involved in the intermural... It was actually middle school back then, track program. And it was a really nice program to get to know the kids and to get them excited. And I know Coach Sweat does a lot in the offseason with the middle school kids through some programs that he runs. And it's a, you know, it's a great extension. You get your student athletes to participate in coaching. It's really a nice thing. It would be, I think it would be a wonderful thing. And Ed has talked to me about it on several occasions this spring, that he really wants to try and get something going. But I'm not sure if we could be competitive at a middle school, in a middle school league. I think we just need to be cautious of that. But certainly, getting kids active and getting them excited about a sport is obviously in everyone's best interest.
Well, maybe it won't look like... Maybe it won't be a competitive league. Maybe it won't look in Wayham like it looks in other towns, but just something to get the kids excited and...
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay.
April?
Some should be things in the middle school. I'm not so sure about a full-fledged program. A lot of schools, I can go a list of schools that don't have middle school programs, but the kids are doing other things. Middle school program, I don't know if we have the facilities here, if we have, you know, the buses, the coaches, the money, there's a lot that would have to go into this.
No, I know, I understand that, I understand that.
And it would have to be another person. I ran the middle school program in Bedford when they did it. And if you're going to do it right, you need another person just really doing that.
Well, you make a good point about the eighth grade not being in the high school already. But, I mean, I have a list of all the schools here that have middle school programs, and there's a lot that are close by to us. Right.
And it doesn't hurt their athletic program.
Well, it might not hurt it, but the addition of one would help it.
It won't hurt it, that's accurate. It will not hurt an athletic program. But the, you know, I don't want to keep you here, I know it's already nine. But, you know, the big thing is, you know, kids have to be involved at a club level to be successful in the programs. Like, I met with the coaches, and I'll be brief with this. And one of the things I said was, I happened to be, which was ironic, coaching a soccer coach's kid in soccer when my son was playing youth soccer, and he was the head coach in a school in the conference. And so we got to talking, and after I said, why aren't you... Why am I coaching and you're not? We got through that, and I said, you know, tell me, what do you think about the competitive balance between your team and Wayham? And he said, here's the difference. He said, every single one of my kids is playing club soccer in the offseason. You have one playing club soccer. Every one of my kids has a personal trainer they work with in the offseason. You don't have anyone working in the offseason with a personal trainer.
Did you say a personal trainer?
Personal trainer. And that's what we're dealing with. I mean, that's the reality is that, you know, you're dealing with that... I challenge you this weekend to look online at the state championship teams for all of the spring sports, and they will have one thing in common. Maybe not if Coach Sweat does his job, though. Maybe not one, but they all have one thing in common. And they're all coming from very affluent towns because they can afford those offseason trainings with personal trainers. I hope Jeff can break that trend on...
Our boys' track team did.
Yeah, no, it's just harder for them. Coming from Bedford and stuff, it's harder for them now. I have two younger ones now that I'm coaching on that level now. And we see, we're going all over the place, and I... They're doing so many things, but nothing to do with middle school. Most towns don't have middle school sports or anything, but their high schools are going to be successful because these kids are doing things all over the place. So that's what needs to be done more.
And it's hard, though, it's hard. It's time and money, it's hard for families.
April?
So with possibility of looking into like more of an intermural sport, whereas you have so many very active youth organizations that have a majority of the middle school students, like the Tigers, the youth soccer, the state, you know, the softball and Little League in the town, would you think that starting an intermural with sports that are not offered on town level like track or tennis would be a good jumping off point to get those inactive kids interested in something other than those sports?
I think that's a great idea, April, because the non-traditional sports, right, don't have the feeder programs. And it's tough to develop a player, you know, in four or five years, you know? And that's, I think that's a really good stepping off point, is look at the field hockey, the track and field, you know, tennis, like, you know, and those, I think that's a really good idea, is you look at those sports because they don't have the Tigers, they don't have the JBA's, you know, they don't have those. I think it's a really good way to go because then you're introducing them to the basics. So when they come into high school, they have the stance that they need. They know where to position it, where to position themselves. I think it's a really good way to take a look at maybe doing some of that. Because that was always, as a former track coach, that was always my struggle. We didn't have a feeder program. So I had to do something with the younger kids to get them ready so when they were in high school, they could perform at the level they needed to perform at. So I think it's really good advice.
Or even our coaches on their opposite seasons do one or two days with the middle school or something, or elementary school. Our girls' basketball coaches starting to do that now. I'd like to see that, that would help a lot, I think.
Like clinics?
That would help a lot. You know, that's what I would like to see.
The key is doing it in the offseason because the athletes that aren't playing a sport during that season are available to help you. That's the only way to do it. And Ed mentioned the facilities. You know, if you're doing field hockey in the spring, you know, you can probably jump on the field by the Boys and Girls Club and work, you know, with the track program to make sure you're not in their way. There's different ways to do that. So it's definitely something that, you know, when you look at it from coaching and facility standpoint, having it in the offseason is key.
A lot of these towns I bet you you're talking about have middle school fields.
Oh, yeah, fields is an issue.
You don't have that. They'd have to share that with that, and then the five sports are going at the same time.
We can't use the gaming field?
I was going to say, we're having a hard enough time with our regular sports at the same season, having places to play.
I never said it would be easy. I just, you know, I'm just...
Maybe start small and build.
Yeah, right.
All right, well, in the interest of time, I'm going to wrap this up at this point. But thank you guys for coming in, and we look forward to our September discussion and resolution.
Make it October so we can get through the September meeting.
One last thing I want to congratulate Coach Sweat in front of everybody. Phenomenal season, got one more to go, 25-0, that's nothing to sneeze at, that's a great accomplishment, all right? And I don't know how many state champions we've had, and I know you've won one. Have we had other state champions in a...
We have, but it's been a while.
Been a while.
Long time.
No pressure.
But you know what, more importantly, he's got some great kids.
Yes.
They're just great kids.
97.5 GPA for his 17 girls.
I believe it, yeah.
Think about what I'm telling you, 97.5.
They have the jackets to prove it.
Yeah.
17 girls.
That's incredible.
I just want everybody to know, they've been successful already. When it happens on Saturday...
No, you're right.
Think about all the firsts, I mean, it's just amazing to see...
You get to go to MIT, that's cool.
Yeah.
They're a great bunch of kids.
Good luck.
Well, thank you very much.
And these two have been, all the playoffs, I'll see these guys every time.
And I've got a bunch of rules, if you ever go to a tennis match, be prepared. You can only cheer on this point.